We'll begin with a moment of reflection, and I would ask that you keep the Fars family in that moment, and following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel, you have had an opportunity to look over the council study session minutes of July the 16th and the council meeting minutes of July the 16th. Are there any corrections or revisions or additions to be made to those? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. We have no communications, petitions, or awards this evening, nor do we have a public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. If you would like to make a comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment.
Good evening. My name is Linda Yatman, and I'm a citizen of Andalia.
Would you give us your address, please?
My address is 761 Helkey Road, Andalia, Ohio 45377.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight, first of all, to, in a proactive way, say thank you. Mr. Robb was so wonderful to follow through with me on my injury that occurred walking on Helkey Avenue, Helkey Road. I had requested that the city come out and the engineer come out and take a look at what's happening to the sidewalks in our city. Now, I do walk quite a distance because of my health issues, and I have to be able to walk. It's the one thing that keeps me moving. I'm a partial severer recovering from quadriplegia, and it's very important that I move my muscles all the time. So, in the result of one of my regular uses of my handicap devices, my walker came to a 100 percent stop on an elevated concrete block. It folded itself up, and I went over the handlebars on my face. When this happened, I fractured my skull. I have a big crack in my head. I broke my eyebrow, and I dislocated my jaw. Probably the worst fall I've ever taken. I can't keep falling. So, I'm on a mission to correct the problem. Nicely enough, Andalia has come out. They walked with me where I walked my dog, and they have repaired every possible place that I could fall. But my problem is that more than I am falling. I have friends have fallen, joggers, bicycle riders, little children, neighbors. Some of them have even had to have knee surgery because of the uneven ground that we're treading on. We probably, and I've lived in five states, we probably have the most active community of people indulging in their walks and jogs and bicycling and so forth of anywhere I've ever been in my life. And I really think it's just a wonderful asset to be able to do that here. But we need to repair all the sidewalks, not just some, not just some. And I was told by one of the executives that the American with Disability Act has stronger contingents than the City of Andalia. I agree. I happen to be a person who is disabled. I have had 51 surgeries. I don't want any more, none. And I don't want anybody who lives near me to have to experience surgery because of falls. And my surgeons have said, if you fall again, Linda, it will become a life-threatening situation. Your titanium is coming out of your spine. Well, that's all I had here to make the decision, to please, please consider working on this for us. I understand that there is money. Mr. Herbst, your dad told me all about this. There is money available, and his dad goes to church with me. There's money available if the council will write the necessary documents to get the grant money, so the citizens do not have to hold responsibility. So, I would be willing to help with that anyway I can, and I'd like to be an asset to our city. Hi, Dave. How are you? Doing good. He, my husband, Doug Solenberger, is my husband. Of course, he's deceased, and thank you for doing the cleanup project in his honor. That was great. All right, that's all I got.
Thank you so very much for coming and pointing this out to us. I think that we can probably investigate a little bit more into what she was talking about with the disabilities and funds and grants available.
Yeah, we'll have to look and see what kind of funds might be available out there.
Thank you so much. This might be a good time, then, too, to talk about how we do continually go around and look at sidewalks, do we not, and have them corrected?
Correct, yeah. Each year, as part of our street reservicing program, we look at the curbs and gutters as well as any sidewalks that need repaired.
And if indeed there is somebody in a neighborhood that is not on the agenda for this year and notices a sidewalk in disrepair, whatever, they should contact the city?
Yeah, they can contact the engineering department, and they'll come out and take a look and see whether or not it meets our standards for repair.
They were able to sand off so everything's level.
Yeah, in this case, they were able to just grind it down and not have to repair the walks, yeah.
But basically, even though we do look at them and so forth, if there is a problem in a neighborhood, they should contact the city.
Correct, yes. If we get a complaint, yeah, we'll come out and take a look at it.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Thank you so much for coming. Is there anyone else who wants to speak tonight? Seeing none, we'll go on with the city manager's report, and we have no information items this evening, nor action items, nor do we have any old business.
I think there is one information item.
I'm sorry, I don't have it on my sheet.
Labor Day?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay. I'm sorry, because I don't have it on my sheet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, city offices are going to be closed on Monday, September 3rd, for Labor Day. The rec center will be open that day from 7:00 a.m. until noon for the fitness area, gymnasium, and track only. And because of Labor Day, the next council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 4th, at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, great. Going on, then, we'll go with the first resolution for this evening, and that's Resolution 18-R-51, Mr. McDonald.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of an upgrade to the phone system equipment requested by the Information Technology Department from Forerunner Technologies, Inc., for an amount totaling $32,847.70.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, we do have $40,000 budgeted to upgrade the phone system equipment. So, this project includes replacement of the phone system software as well as the voicemail system. We did receive two quotes from local vendors, with Forerunner submitting the lowest and best quote. In addition, we will have annual software and hardware warranty renewals that we'll have to add to the IT department's annual operating budget, estimated at about $5,500 annually.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve...
I'm sorry. I have both ears here, one on one ear and one on the other, and it was exactly at the same time, so I don't care which one.
Go ahead, Mr. Lewis. I think you beat me to it.
Councilman Lewis?
I move that we approve Resolution 18-R-51 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Lewis, second by Vice Mayor Herbst, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-51 as presented. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst.
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0. Resolution 18-R-52, Mr. McDonald.
A resolution to continue an agreement for legal services with Jackson Lewis.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, the city utilizes the services of Jackson Lewis as outside legal counsel for collective bargaining negotiations as well as personnel matters. The cost of these services will most likely exceed $25,000 for the calendar year, with the proposed addition of a Teamsters unit for a public works department, as well as the firefighter captain's unit in the Division of Fire. So, authorization by council is required in order to continue our agreement with Jackson Lewis.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I'll make... Well, I'll make a motion we approve Resolution 18-R-52.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Gerhard, second by Councilman Lewis, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-52. Once again, are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst.
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0. Resolution 18-R-53, Mr. McDonald.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of highway rock salt from the Detroit Salt Company in Detroit, Michigan, at a price of $69.87 per ton for an amount up to 2,000 tons.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, the city participates in the Southwest Ohio Purchasers for Government purchasing consortium for the bidding of highway rock salt. SWAT 4G recently received bids on behalf of about 89 entities. The city did receive four bids. Detroit Salt Company was the lowest bid at $69.87 per ton for up to 2,000 tons, and this price is $21.80 per ton more than last year's bid, so about a 31 percent increase.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 18-R-53.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 18-R-53. Any comments? Just to sort of say, in regards to the increase, I was reading some articles where some of the communities have a much greater increase, so I think ours was pretty good.
Correct, yeah. It's less bad than some of the others.
Yes, that's right. Less bad than some of the others.
Pretty good increase. But if you remember back in 2014, I think we paid $114 a ton, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst.
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. We have no ordinances this evening in the first reading. We do have an ordinance in its second reading, and that's Ordinance 18-18. Mr. McDonald?
Ordinance 18-18, an ordinance adopting the 2017 Ohio Fire Code and amending Section 161001 of the Fire City Prevention Code.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, this ordinance would adopt the 2017 Ohio Fire Code that was recently updated to reflect the most current standards and best practices.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance 18-18, second reading.
Oh, wait a minute.
There is an emergency, right?
It's an emergency. No, it's a second reading. I'm sorry, I needed to open it up for a public hearing before we made a motion, so... If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment about Ordinance 18-18 in its second reading, please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your statement. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion, Ms....
Motion to approve Ordinance 18-18, second reading.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilman Gerhard, that we do approve Ordinance 18-18 in its second reading. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst.
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. We have an emergency ordinance this evening, and that's Ordinance 18-19. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending Chapter 660 Sanitation and Health of Part VI General Offenses Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Andalia by enacting Section 660.19 titled "Unsolicited Written Materials" and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, as council is aware, over the past several months, the city has been inundated with unsolicited written materials that are being strewn about the public right of way. Additionally, the city has received many complaints from residents regarding such unwanted materials being haphazardly thrown upon their properties, creating visual litter and blight. Again, this ordinance would restrict the delivery, placement, or distribution of unsolicited written materials to the following locations and manners. So, one, it could be delivered on a porch, if one exists, nearest the front door. Two, such that materials are securely attached to the front door. Three, through a mail slot on the front door or principal structure, if one exists. Four, between the exterior front door, if one exists and is unlocked, and the interior front door. Five, again, in a distribution box located on or adjacent to the premises. Six, securely attached to a hook or within some other receptacle that's used for the delivery of non-U.S. mail packages or materials attached to the mailbox post on for the premises, if it exists. Or seven, personally to the owner, occupant, and/or less see of the premises. So, this ordinance would hold the organization liable for any offenses committed by their employees or third parties acting on their behalf. And additionally, homeowners or residents would have the right to restrict entry onto their premises from such delivery of unsolicited materials with a "no solicitors" or similar sign.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and your statement? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance 18-19 as an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilman Lewis, that we do approve Emergency Ordinance 18-19. Are there any comments?
We'll make a comment that this has been a major problem in our city, and one of the things that I've heard probably the most complaints from citizens about is this littering, and I appreciate staff being proactive and looking for a possible solution to all of this.
Thank you.
I would echo the same thing. This ordinance gives us a little bit more teeth, because we've gone the other route and give notice to those that have been doing this, and seems to have gone on deaf ears, so this does give us a little bit, another tool in the toolbox, to be able to rectify this, and I'm also glad that we're doing this as a recipient of this litter as well, so...
And I'll just ask, the citizens can also contact us again, as they have been, if indeed this happens, right?
That is correct, yeah.
All right, anybody else? Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst.
Yes.
Mayor Setser.
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0. From reports of our, from our boards and commissions, we do have a conditional use at 3888 Stone Quarry Road. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, Donna Wright is requesting conditional use approval to permit a secondary dwelling unit on a 2.35 acre property. The applicant has requested the detached secondary dwelling be located to the east of the house behind an existing detached garage. The applicant desires the secondary dwelling to be about 925 square feet. However, the code limits secondary dwellings to 25 percent of the principal floor area, which would limit the dwelling to not more than 543 square feet. The planning commission reviewed this request at its May 22nd meeting and voted 3-0 to recommend approval, subject to the following condition. One, is that the secondary dwelling may not be used as a rental unit at any time. And just from my counsel, the applicant has also filed a variance request, which you're going to hear next, regarding the size of the secondary dwelling.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the conditional use at 3888 Stone Quarry Road, subject to the conditions named.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Lewis, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve It's been moved by Councilman Lewis, second by Councilman Blakesley, that we do approve the conditional use at 3888 Stone Quarry Road with the conditions identified. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0. We now go to the variance at 3888 Stone Quarry Road. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, Mrs. Wright is requesting a variance to allow the secondary dwelling to exceed 25% of the floor area of the principal building, and the principal building is 2,172 square feet, which would limit the size of the secondary building to 532 square feet. The proposed 925 square foot secondary dwelling equates to about 43% of the principal building. The BZA reviewed this request at its July 25th meeting and voted 3-0 to recommend approval, subject to the conditional use being approved, which it just was.
Great. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance at 3888 Stone Quarry Road for the additional square footage of the second dwelling.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakesley, second by, excuse me, motion made by Councilman Blakesley, second by Councilman Ayers to approve the variance request at 3888 Stone Quarry Road. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0. We have a variance request at 1428 Helkey Road. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Albert Miller is requesting a variance for the construction of a 1,152 square foot expansion onto a 768 square foot existing detached garage at 1428 Helkey Road. Now, the proposed expansion to bring the detached garage to 6.5% of the total area, total lot area, where 3.5% is the maximum permitted for an accessory use. Additionally, the code limits accessory structures to not more than 40% of the gross floor area of the principal building, which is 1,993 square feet. The proposed expansion would bring the detached garage to 96% of the gross floor area of the home. The BZA did review this request at its June 27th meeting and voted 2 to 2. And just a reminder that should council vote to approve the variance request, again, a variance to the impervious surface coverage requirements is probably also going to be necessary because of the additional concrete that will be poured to accommodate the garage.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the variance request for the detached garage at 1428 Helkey Road. Do I need to add the impervious surface into it?
Yeah.
With the approval of the impervious, impervious surface?
Correct, yeah. Our limit for impervious area is 30%, and we estimate this to be about 31%.
31%, correct.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Herbst, second by Councilman Ayers, that we do approve the variance request at 1428 Helkey Road. Are there any comments?
I'm in favor of this, and we'll vote accordingly, although the only trepidation I have is it is a pretty substantial secondary building, but I think the lot size and its placement is a little bit unique as opposed to the standard subdivision type housing that we have in the majority of Vandelia, and I think that thus it's warranted.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Council, I'm sorry, don't know where I'm at here. Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion passes 6-0. We have another variance request at 178 North Brown School Road. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So All-Star Fence is requesting a variance to allow a six-foot-high fence in Zone A, or 42 inches is the minimum height permitted. The zoning code restricts the height of fences in residential districts to a maximum of 42 inches in height within Zone A, which is that area between the street right of way and 15 feet behind the front building line. The fence was constructed four feet into Zone A without the proper permit. The Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed this request at its June 27th meeting and voted 4-0 to recommend denial.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we deny the variance at 178 North Brown School Road.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Lewis, second by Vice Mayor Herbst, that we deny the variance at 178 North Brown School Road. Are there any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion passes to deny the variance request at 178 North Brown School Road. We have a number of our boards and commission minutes here, starting off with the Board of Zoning Appeals Minutes of June 27th, Public Art in Vandelia Committee Minutes of June 19th, Public Art in Vandelia Committee Draft Minutes of July 17th, Vandelia Civil Service Draft Minutes of June 21st, Vandelia Cultural Arts Committee Minutes at June 19th, Vandelia Cultural Arts Committee Draft Minutes of July 17th. We have a bill listing for July 2018 in the amount of $2,681,755.75. That brings us to council comments. Mr. McDonald?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Just a couple items, Your Honor. First, I need to recognize Mrs. Leiter and the rest of the Finance Department that will once again be recognized by the Ohio Auditor of State with the award for distinction, and in this case, it's for the 29th consecutive year. Less than 5% of all entities audited in the state of Ohio get recognized with the award of distinction again, and we've been fortunate to do it for 29 consecutive years, so, thank you. The representative from the auditor's office will be here Friday morning at 8:30 a.m. We'll be here in the council chambers, they'll be presenting the award, and we'll get some pictures taken. And just the next thing is that we want to remind council, we will be holding a special meeting to review the zoning code update. That's going to be on August 27th, so next Monday, in the large conference room, beginning at 6:00 p.m.
At all? I have to make an apology. At our last council meeting, we were just sort of whipping through council comments and so forth, and I skipped Vice Mayor Herbst. I do apologize, and because of that, you get to go first.
What an honor.
Well, first of all, I'd like to comment on the walkways to Morton that was poured last, last week. Turned out great, and I think that's going to be a huge benefit to the students as they travel to and from school. And also like to excuse Councilwoman Fars from all of the meetings tonight.
It's been moved by, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Herbst, second by Councilman Lewis, that we excuse Councilwoman Fars from all meetings this evening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I could just add that, again, our public works department, they did all the work on the new walkway out in front of the rec center.
Yes.
So, again, we, again, need to thank them as well for all of their work getting that done.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's all.
Councilman Ayers?
No comments, thank you.
Councilman Gerhard?
No comments tonight.
Councilman Blakesley?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilman Lewis?
My only thought is that we need to keep up the pressure on the township to finish the execution of that sidewalk all the way to Morton up to Peters, and it's a great, we've met our end of the bargain, but they've got three or four parcels of land there that they need to acquire the rights and get that sidewalk poured or whatever, so. Anything we can do as a, as a council or as a city manager to help get that done, we need to do it. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. So many things have happened in the city and so forth, and one of them was the National Night Out, and I think I've attended every single one that's been held, but it was a really nice experience this year. And this year, I got to fingerprint, and it was very interesting because the, the parents were just so enthusiastic about getting their children fingerprinted and having those available to them. As a matter of fact, we ran out, so I don't know if our police department offers that or not, but just know that there are some parents out there that still would like to have the fingerprints done. And earlier, I met with our city manager, and I told him I was going to ask him to be prepared to bring us all up to date. You know, there are so many concerns about the truck traffic, and this has been going on for some time, and I don't think that everybody knows that we have been on the issue. We have done things in the past, we're currently doing things, and we're also looking at some other corrective measures, and I would just ask him to bring everybody kind of up to date with that. Would you please, Mr. Cruzey?
Yes. I think, you know, council is aware, and I think the communities are aware at this point, that we've, again, installed a sign package around the community encouraging the semi-trucks to take the Airport Access Road, I-70, I-75 around the community rather than taking National Road to get out to the west end. And so we've placed that signage out at National Road at Peters, National Road out at the Airport Access Road, as well as on North Woods at the Flying J, as well as at the intersection of North Woods and Dixie. Additionally, we've prohibited semi-trucks, any truck in excess of 24 feet in length from making right-hand turns from northbound or southbound Dixie onto National Road, because when we, when we had an engineering analysis done, it's not safe for them to make those right-hand turns without encroaching out onto oncoming lanes of traffic, and so we've done that as well. The other thing we've done is we've been out to visit some of our, some of our local businesses, as well as some businesses outside the city that are responsible for a lot of this truck traffic, to encourage them to have their trucking companies, again, take the alternate route around. So we've done that as best we can. The other thing we've done is you're going to see the police department doing some additional enforcement out on, out on National Road, making sure that the trucks are operating safely and obeying the laws, as well as, again, not making those right-hand turns there at Dixie and National. So again, we're starting to step up enforcement as well.
Okay, and I'm just going to ask a couple of questions here, because I know that every single time, for example, you went out early and all this to the businesses, and we saw a difference.
Yeah.
You put up the signs, and we saw a difference, but then slowly but surely, they, something else pops up. And one of the things I have question about is, I have heard, I haven't seen personally, but I have heard from some of residents that by accident or choice or whatever, some of these trucks are taking some of our residential streets to access Dixie up to, so forth on up. They have gotten stuck on Foley. I've heard about that one. Anyway, and I was just curious to know whether or not we could erect signs that would help in distinguishing our streets as a no truck through?
No through truck, yeah, we can do that if there's issues on certain streets, yes.
Okay, for example, like Stone Quarry, which we've heard some reports of.
Well, again, I think we're going to have information for council at your next meeting. We had some traffic counts done out there, so we'll be able to give you information on traffic volumes, number of trucks out there that...
The traffic counts do count the trucks?
Correct, yeah, they're able to differentiate between the number of axles that are running over it. So we've got that information. I think Rob got it late last week, so we'll have it for you at your September council meeting, give you a rundown of, because I think that the counter was out there for, what, five to seven days?
We put out seven days.
Seven days, so we'll have seven days worth of counts for you to tell you.
Okay, great.[1637.62]